The time has come for the Thursday, October 17th, 2019, special city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Mayor.
Present. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next holder will be mayor's comments, but before then, I know we had some seats that were kind of held for, some elected officials, if some of you want to move up, you're welcome to that, okay? On the agenda is mayor's comments. Good evening, everyone, and continuing our public hearing, and as the legislation requires, I welcome everyone back for tonight's special meeting. I want to start by thanking everyone for an engaged process over the last few months and many, many years before. Thanks to Governor Pritzker, all the state elected officials, but especially State Senator Terry Link, Representative Rita, all of our Aldermen, present and past, our neighbors in North Chicago, Park City, and throughout the county, and all the other county residents for your assistance and comments on this process and the decision we have before us today. Thank you. Item D. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. To make this clear to the record, this is a continuation of the public hearing that started on September 17th. It is a statutorily required process that we are following. We're trying, doing everything we can to follow the process within the timeline allowed by the General Assembly and the legislation that was adopted at the end of June and signed into law in July. The legislation doesn't give much, didn't give much room, so some of you had to make special efforts to see documents and to understand the issues that were presented before you, and we thank you for your efforts in that regard. As you know, we, the public hearing commenced on September 17th, and there were a number of people that spoke. The mayor and Aldermen have received comments from a number of other folks. Perhaps Noel, you would be good enough to give us a rundown of how much public comment there was, and a little bit about what, how that process has worked.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Alderman. I know many of you have received direct communication from your constituents regarding the casino over this summer and early fall. I'd like to take a minute to review the process that we undertook, as well as the public input that we received. As we indicated at the outset of this effort, our intention was to conduct a process that was open and transparent. Because we understood that members of the public, in addition to casino operators, would want to look at the request for proposals, we made the document available on our website without requiring registration to download it. As soon as we were able to vet the submittals to ensure that the packages we received were complete submissions, under the RFP, we published the names of the entities that submitted proposals. As soon as we were able to verify the confidential and proprietary information within the proposals, we posted the redacted versions on the website for any interested parties to review. We also provided opportunities for the Aldermen to privately review the complete unredacted proposals. As soon as we were able to review a consulting proposal and present it to the city council for approval, we brought in a neutral third-party consultant, Johnson Consulting, to review the casino proposals, lead our interview process, and provide independent evaluation for the city council's consideration. We scheduled a public hearing at which the proposing teams were able to present their proposals in a public setting, where the audience could hear firsthand the merits of each proposal directly from the teams. We moved the public hearing location to a venue with a larger capacity as soon as we had a clear indication that the audience might exceed the available space in this room, to ensure that all interested parties would be able to clearly hear and see the presentations and the proposing teams, and we provided the video on our YouTube channel. Approximately 500 people attended that hearing. Forty-four people spoke at the public hearing, and 17 written comments were received that evening. Understanding that public meetings are not always convenient for residents to attend due to their own obligations, we opened a 17-day comment period, where people could submit comments via email, postal mail, or personal delivery. We received 1,249 written or emailed comments during this period. Following the close of the public comment period, 26 people made additional comments at the October 7th city council meeting. All of these comments will be included in the City of Waukegan's submittal to the Illinois Gaming Board.
Thank you, Noel.
Thank you. Ms. Noel.
Noel?
So, I, and I believe all of the Alder, Aldermen received numerous emails to our official email address.
Your personal city addresses?
Yes. Were those included in the 1,249 count?
The 1,249 count includes the emails that were submitted as we draft, as we wrote out in the public comment period policy, emails to the casino@waukeganil.gov email address, as well as the comments that were delivered or mailed to the city clerk's office. So it included the comments submitted by the official channels for the public comment period.
Okay, great, thank you.
But not ones that were specifically sent to the Aldermen?
I don't have access to your email account, so there's no way that I could gather those.
Okay, thank you.
So if you forwarded them to the casino email address, then we have those. But otherwise, they're not included in that 1,249.
Alderman Rivera.
Is there a summary of the comments, or is it just comments, the pages are all going to be sent?
The pages are all posted on board docs right now, so they're available for anybody to look at. I can give you a little bit of an overview.
Please.
Sure. So from the public hearing, there were 44 speakers and 17 written comments that were submitted that night. Ten forms were submitted blank, just with somebody's name, and some of them wrote comment or left it blank. I believe these people thought that they had to fill out that form in order to speak that night, and I did compare those 10 to the list of people who spoke, and each of them was somebody who spoke, so they actually made their comments verbally. There were nine forms that were submitted with questions. One neutral statement was submitted by a non-resident social service agency representative. Two support statements were submitted by people self-reporting as residents or property owners in Waukegan. Five objection statements were submitted by people self-reporting as residents or property owners. So that, again, was at the public hearing. Then during the comment period, again, 1,249 comments were received. One of them was a test email, just verifying that it didn't bounce back. Five emails were received with questions that didn't state a position. Twelve emails were received in opposition to any casino from individuals. One communication supported Rivers. One communication supported Full House. Four communications supported North Point. These are, again, individual emails.
I'm sorry, excuse me. How many for North Point?
Four.
Thank you.
Of those individual emails. And then four other communications were general support for a casino. There were 52 emails received originating from the no-reply@waukeganforward.com in opposition to a casino. There were four emails received from no-reply@waukeganforward.com that had the form letter that was standard on the other 52, but it also, those also had additional comments beyond the form. There were 331 emails received from info@payzbigwaukegan.com, supporting Potawatomi Casino. 833 postcards were submitted in support of North Point Casino, and those were delivered in a box to the city clerk's office. And then one 77-page comment was delivered to the city clerk's office.
Can you clarify those numbers one more time, please?
Sure, the whole, the whole thing.
Just those last ones you did. Starting with the 52 opposition.
Okay. Fifty-two emails, so these, these emails from these, from Waukegan Forward, from Payz Big Waukegan, those were like form letter kind of things. I didn't go on either of those websites to see exactly how it looked on the website, but what came to us on our end was basically a, a, a letter that was generated that was the same across submittals. So I'm calling it a form letter, there may be a better term for that. So 52 of those were received from no-reply@waukeganforward.com, that was the email address. It would have a person's name, and you'll see those if you, if you look on board docs at all the comments. Those are up there. So it would have the submitter's name, but then the return address would be no-reply@waukeganforward.com. Those were all in opposition to a casino period, not specifying anyone, just opposition to us having a casino. There were an additional four received from that email address that had the form letter plus extra comments beyond what was on the form.
Would you count those as opposed?
They were opposed, yes. So they included the form letter that stated opposition, but they added extra comments. Those are also posted on board docs.
Okay, thank you.
So that's 56 total from that email address. Then from info@payzbigwaukegan, that was a support letter for Potawatomi Casino specifically. There were 331 of those received.
Okay.
And then we, also at the clerk's office, we received a box that was full of postcards that were separated by ward in rubber-banded bunches. Those are all, also posted on there. On board docs, they're, they're copied four on a page, just for saving space, since it, since they were postcards, they fit four on a page. So there were 833 postcards, individual postcards received. It's not 833 pages, but it's 833 postcards, and those were all in support of North Point Casino.
Okay.
One box.
That was one box. One box, including 833 postcards individually, rubber-banded by ward.
So all 833 of those came from the residents in Waukegan? They were all split up by wards?
They were delivered.
Excuse me, excuse me. Sir, please, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
They were delivered in a box, and they were separated by ward number.
All 833?
I did not verify that those were residents in those wards, so I can't guarantee that. They just, each one had a ward number, and when you look at them online, you can see that it says ward on there.
Okay.
There are some from each ward. The counts vary by ward.
Okay, great, thank you.
So it's 833 total. I didn't count how many were for each ward, so I can't give you that number, but if you want to count, you're welcome to do that.
I might do that.
On board docs. And then there was also one packet that was submitted. Now, I believe there was an attempt to submit it via email, but it was probably too big and bounced back. The city has a 10-megabyte threshold for emails. Anything larger than that bounces back, no matter what email address in the city you send it to. So this may have been larger than that. The printed version was 77 pages.
77 pages?
Seven, 70, 77 pages, and that was delivered to the city clerk's office. That's also posted on board docs.
Is that opposition or support, or what was the nature of it?
It was a whole bunch of comments, opposition to some things specifically. I didn't write it, so I can't best speak to it, but it is posted on board docs.
And that was from one person?
That was one person's submittal, yes.
Really?
So it included some photocopies of some newspaper articles and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Noel.
Sure.
Item two, new business. Presentation by Johnson Consulting, consultant to the City of Waukegan. Charles?
My name is Charles Johnson, president of Johnson Consulting, 6 East Monroe Street, Chicago, Illinois. With me today is Sarah Emmerton. We were the consultants that analyzed the proposals that were received on your behalf. I think that the upshot, first, I want to clarify something. We received the proposals in the prescribed manner, and they, and those are what are considered in our analysis. There were also subsequent materials submitted by three of the groups, and unfortunately, the process does not allow for supplemental information to be considered. So we think it's important that you take it under advisement and be aware of it, but it was not reflected in here, and nor, from a purchasing standpoint, can it be, from a technical standpoint, included in our analysis. So I just wanted to make the, you all aware of that supplemental information. So we have analyzed the proposals. We believe that all four of the responses properly bracket the range of sales volume, gaming revenue that can happen. Two are at the higher end, and two are at the lower end. In our judgment, all four bidders are qualified. All four bidders are able to deliver the project, and in our professional opinion, they bracket the right range of what sales are. It's a complicated situation right now in Illinois, given the supplemental licenses coming in and the modifications that are happening. So I don't think, I think your community is in a very fortuitous situation with respect to having four qualified bidders, and I think we provided a ranking based upon the information that was at, available to us based upon the proposals, which we've supplied in our report, but you can't go wrong with either, all four of these bidders, in our judgment. So we're here to answer more technical questions, if you have them, during the analysis and discussion that you all have, and Sarah and I will be pleased to answer any questions that you have. And I'll be pleased to answer questions now as well, yes.
We're going to go with Alderman Rivera, then Alderman Florian. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to ask, you indicated that no supplemental information was reflected, and you gave a reason why, but can, can you indicate to us again why was that not able to be included?
You went through a prescribed process for the Illinois Gaming Commission Board, all right, and you issued a request for proposals, and there was no supplemental request for best and final offers. So it's inconsistent, in our view, to, once people can see other people's bids, then they can go and modify it. So, you know, technically, there isn't a mechanism to allow that to happen, because there was no formal request for that. Now, there were substantial modifications to the proposals, and I think what that illustrates is when you, what's going to happen next is after you make your recommendations to the Illinois Gaming Board, they're going to go through their technical process, make sure everyone's compliant, legally qualified, and probably come back with a hierarchy and ranking of the bids that you have. Then you will enter into a negotiation, and then all that supplemental information that we have becomes a resource to you in subsequent negotiations and your development agreement. So that's the reason technically we're not allowed to receive other information unless that was given to all the parties to allow them to have a best and final offer. So it's really a technical problem that is the situation that you have. It's not a bad thing, it's a good thing that they came forward with supplemental information. It's just not prescribed legally in the purchasing process.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera. Alderman Florian.
Okay, for the benefit of people who maybe haven't read this report, although it is available online, the final result was that Full House Resorts was ranked number one in the end. North Point was ranked number two. Rivers was ranked number three, and Potawatomi was ranked number four. That was the end assessment, let's say.
And all are grouped within a couple points.
Yeah, they're very close, but you did rank them that way. So my question is, you included a graph indicating the purchase price, and, and this is the only place, I believe, where Full House is ranked one and North Point is ranked two, Rivers is three, Waukegan, Potawatomi is four. So that was based on the purchase price. Then the proposed development, Potawatomi was ranked first, Full House was ranked second, Rivers was ranked third, and North Point was ranked fourth. Then on annual employment created, which is one of the things I hear people talk a lot about, is how many jobs are going to be created by this process. Potawatomi is ranked first, Rivers second, Full House third, and North Point fourth. Then on gaming tax admissions, do they charge every person that comes in? Is this how this works?
It's a calculated, yeah, there is a fee.
To enter the casino?
No, no one takes money out of their pocket.
But the casino pays based on, okay, all right, I didn't understand it. Anyway, they project how much they're going to get. Rivers is first, Potawatomi second, Full House is third, and North Point is fourth, again. Let's see, then on financial data, Rivers is first.
They're the strongest.
Potawatomi second, North Point is third, Full House is fourth. Then on projected gross device and table gaming revenue, which is the money coming in and the machines and the tables, Potawatomi's ranked first, Rivers is ranked second, Full House is third, and North Point is fourth. I could keep going, but, so my point is, how did you come up with the final ranking when none of these other numbers make any sense to what your final point was?
Well, they all accrue. They're not weighted.
Hold on a second, sir. Excuse me, Charles. Everyone, I understand your passion for or against, but please be considerate. Let's get this process going. Alderman, you have the floor, all of you. If you haven't asked a question, people in the audience, please, I'm begging you, let them speak. Thank you. All right, Charles, thank you, sir.
So it really, we did not wait anything. We took the absolute rankings of each of those and did mathematically summarize them from a technical standpoint, but no waiting, no qualitative aspects at all. It's a simple mathematics. And so by definition, the ones that had the higher gaming revenue would proportionally have more tax revenue, et cetera. The question is, are the ranges reasonable with respect to the, the sales volume? So all the numbers that relate to tax revenue and employment are really pulled from the proposals. We did due diligence and did not find a technical reason to say that they are wrong. So we did take them ver, as reported, and then summarize them, and then ranked, then su, I wouldn't even call it a ranking per se, because it doesn't deal with any qualitative. We mathematically summarized what the price of the land was going to be. If one was one, they got one, and the lower the value of the ranking, the higher the value of the offer was, in all the cases. So we really just took simple math and added them up, and whatever the, without ranking or weighting, whatever the attribute was that we analyzed.
But wouldn't you agree that as a community, the two most important things for us would be how many jobs are created and how much revenue it's going to bring in?
That is correct. And the question would be, is, are the numbers reported, the two operators that have existing business are the ones that had the highest scale? And the ones that were new to the market, but which one's right? And that's the question. So I think that the, you have some interesting things happening in the marketplace, with the new licenses coming on, the decreasing gaming volume that's happening nationally because of the dispersion of gaming that's happening to all the other things. So I think technically, our analysis is correct, and, you know, you have to judge. That's the reason, you know, advancing just one proposal, I think, would be ill-advised, but doing more than one and multiple proposals, I think, is what our direction would be.
Alderman Taylor.
A question on page five, where with North Point, they're giving $10 million plus $1 million a year for a total of $22 million.
Correct.
But with Potawatomi, they're giving 5.6 and 15% of the appraised value, but that didn't get calculated in.
Well, it got calculated in by us. I mean, we understood what the appraised value was, and we did reflect that into the mathematics of their purchase price. It was still ranked where it was with that in there. I think it's the fairest process we could provide at this juncture.
Can I ask one more question?
Alderman, yeah, sure. Alderman Florian. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Alderman Taylor, were you, were you finished?
I'm sorry, were you done? Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Florian.
So was there any way you put any kind of, I don't want to, I don't know if I, any, any word I can, effort into determining how these numbers were created? My husband used to sell cars, and, and my analogy to people is, I feel like we're being sold a used car, and we're told, "Don't look under the hood, don't, don't drive it, just trust us. This is going to be a great car. Just, just sign on the dotted line, and you're going to be thrilled with this." How do we, how do we know if these numbers are based in any kind of reality, I guess, is what I'm trying to say?
Well, I think that the, we did not conduct independent analysis. The bidders did, all right, and, you know, in our judgment, they, they use the finest consulting firms that are available. So I think everybody from the base of information presented by the four bidders, I think there is a fair understanding of what the market share, market penetration is. It's just interesting that there's different judgment. I think some were more aggressive, others are more conservative, and I think, but I, in my judgment, you're easily within the range of reasonableness at the highest and at the lowest. So I think it becomes, there's nothing more we can tell you specifically about each individual proposal. Sarah and I absolutely did due diligence on each one and answered the question, are they technically capable of delivering, and are the numbers within the realm of appropriateness for your consideration? And our conclusion there is absolutely yes. You're definitely in the range. So if, if your criteria is 100% money-oriented, then you're, you're taking a risk, because they may or may not materialize. I think the ones that have a lower have headroom, and the ones that are higher are probably achievable, but they may come in a little lower than that. You don't know until you get to the actual execution of the project, giving all the things that have to settle still in the marketplace.
Okay, I just have one more question. Was there any ethical considerations in any of these companies? Did you look at that at all?
Yeah, we did. We certainly did our due diligence in looking at the nature of the quality of the companies, and all of them have high integrity. And we did not see any ethical components at the principal level of, of the, of the proposals. That we would...
All right. Thank you, Charles, for that. On the item 2B, we'll be moving into...
Is it ratified? These are the resolutions to certify the various candidates.
Okay. So resolution for CDI-RSG, better known as Rivers. There's a motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Rivera. You don't want to second the motion? Motion by, second by Alderman Kirkwood. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Before I vote, I want to say something. I don't like this whole process. I don't like the way it's set up. I don't like the idea that the state and city is picking one winner for a monopoly in a certain category of business, and that's all it is, is a business deal. We don't do this with laundromats, we don't do it with liquor stores, we don't do it with restaurants, we don't do it with any other business, where we decide and we take measure of how they're going to operate their business, what return they're going to get on their investment. on their investment. We don't treat any other business as if we, the city of Waukegan, are a partner or investor, and we are not. My only consideration here is the value of the land that we own, that the bidders propose to purchase from us, and what is their offer for our land. It's strictly a land deal, in my mind, as it should be, I think, in everyone's. We are getting way off pace by measuring intent and supposition and what they think. And to that point, every projection is a guess, is their best guess, somebody's best guess. They have no idea what the market is going to return, we don't know what the economy is going to do. Stock market is up, it's going to go down. I think we should focus on the offer for the land. I have a consideration about, a concern, I should say, rather, about the Rivers Casino in specific, in that about 15 years ago, there was a bidding war for a license for Waukegan, one license for Waukegan, and there were multiple bids taken, and there was a winner of that bid. And that bid was invalidated by the Illinois Gaming Board, and the license for Waukegan was awarded to Des Plaines, to the Rivers Casino in Des Plaines, right? And the reason for that invalidation was that one, one or more, a couple of the principals that had won that bid, they retained it, and the Illinois Gaming Board decided, you know what? We're not going to play games. You guys can't have a license. And there's a little more complicated than that, but the gist of it is, a principal involved in that venture was deemed unfit. And now, one of those principals in that venture that ended up giving Rivers the license that was supposed to go to Waukegan is now involved as a principal in this bid. I don't like it. But I trust in the Illinois Gaming Board to make the right decisions, to consider all of those things. Maybe there's something I'm not aware of, it was a long time ago, they're going to vet and validate every bidder, so I don't want to hold too much weight against it, but I just don't like it, okay? I do kind of like their proposal, all other things considered. So I'm going to vote yes for Rivers. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera?
No.
Alderman Florian?
No.
Alderman Taylor?
No. And I will say that the process, it's not, per se, a casino that has me worried here. It is the process that we have gone about this. When you have somebody that comes in and taints the picture, and I'm not just saying with Rivers, it all starts to go downhill very quickly. And I think at this point, there's so much confusion, there's been no economic study. This consulting evaluation, I can't even find accurate. So because I don't have that information, and I know the impact that it'll have on our community as a whole, I'm a no vote.
All right. The motion's passed for a resolution for CDI-RSG Rivers. Item B, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, to send a resolution, certify resolution for Full House. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseaux?
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
No.
Alderman Florian?
No.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Resolution passed. Motion by, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Turner, to send resolution, resolution, certify resolution for Lakeside Casino LLC. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseaux?
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
I'm sorry.
Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
No.
Alderman Florian?
No.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Resolution, to certify resolution for Potawatomi, there's a motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by, the motion passed for item D. Item E, to certify resolution for Potawatomi, there's a motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Florian.
No.
Taylor?
No.
Rivera?
No.
Second by Alderman Moiseaux. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
No. Alderman Seager?
No.
Alderman Moiseaux?
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
No.
Alderman Rivera?
No.
Alderman Florian?
No.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Motion, the motion E fails. Resolution requesting consideration for local interest. Bobby, you want to kind of explain that, so the, Alderman, you had a chance to read the resolutions, correct?
Yeah.
Alderman? All right. Bob, go ahead and explain that resolution there.
The purpose behind this resolution was to ask the, let me, let me back up a little bit. One of the things that we have seen in the past in other, in other situations, including the one that Alderman Turner spoke about a little while ago with the prior bidding for the Emerald Casino, about, what was that, 12, 10, 12 years ago? The Gaming Board holds an auction as part of the statutory process, and concern is that they will simply look at what is the highest amount of money that the bidders will put in to try to obtain the local, the license. That is the license fee that goes to the state. What this resolution does is it asks the Gaming Board to consider other factors that are more local in nature, the amount of jobs that are created, the taxes that are going to be provided in addition, the entertainment options, and all the other factors that go into it, so that you end up, hopefully, with a broader decision by the Gaming Board that more closely matches the needs of Waukegan, the Waukegan residents, the region's area, including North Chicago and Park City, and all of our, all of our other Lake County partners up here, with the ultimate idea being to try to encourage this as, if, now that you're going to have a casino, they're going to certify somebody, please make sure that it has the impact, the best possible impact for the citizens and everybody in this area to bring this whole area forward. Ultimately, that benefits not only these folks up here, sitting here, us and all of our neighbors and friends, but all of Illinois, because it generates more revenue across the board and better economic prosperity for everyone. That's the purpose behind the resolution.
Motion by Alderman. Going to read it, resolution?
It's too long. It's, it's too long. It's two pages.
It was, it was on Board Docs. Let's, let's do this, so let's vote on it. Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Rivera on this resolution. Any other questions to the motion?
Mayor, if it, Alderman wants me to read, there's some bullet points I got pulled up, I can read that real quick. We don't need all the legal jargon, I don't think, whereas and whatfor's.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Section 1, the Illinois Gaming Board has respectfully requested to examine the impact of the certified candidates for the casino license in Waukegan using the following criteria: drive the relief of local property taxes for primary responsibility for funding police, fire, and other public pensions; enhance property values resulting in increased investments that flows from that important factor; provide more career-level jobs particularly among Waukegan residents; create union jobs during the construction process and afterwards; grow of tourism and tourism-based spin-off enterprises through expansion of offerings of entertainment and dining options; and utilize environmentally-friendly architecture and building techniques to reduce reliance on fossil fuels. That's the nuts and bolts of it.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseaux?
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
I apologize, I didn't read it. I appreciate you reading it to me, Alderman Moiseaux. I can't vote on something I don't clearly understand. I'll vote no.
Alderman Rivera?
I'm also voting no, and, well, that's it, I'm voting no, thank you.
Alderman Florian?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman.
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Taylor?
Because we had a presentation by Johnson Consulting tonight, do we have to have a public, open it up to public questions, or, I just want to clarify that because it's been asked? Okay.
No, ma'am. All right, there's a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Seager, and second by Alderman Taylor to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, thank you, everybody, for coming, and have a great evening.